I have nothing to do with this.
It says 6:02, yeah. I guess we use that. It's okay to start, you get ready? Am I ready? Okay, let's go. All right, we recall a meeting to order. This is the regular meeting for the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation for September 16th, 2025. It is 5:59 and change, and so we'll get the meeting started. So let's start out by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God and indivisible. One indivisible. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. We have President Arnett and Ms. Carroll, Dan, myself, Casey, and I believe Ryan is out ill and Wade is...
Wade.
Wade. So we will get cranky up here. All right. The... See, did we have anybody that was scheduled to participate in visiting with us today? No? Nobody applied for that? Okay. And so then we'll just jump into the first item on the agenda, which is the item number three, consideration and possible action on the regular meeting minutes for August 19th, 2025. I reviewed the minutes myself. They appear to have everything that we discussed in a bit of abbreviated way, but it's probably fine that way. At least we got all the information on there. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept the meetings?
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
The minutes, yeah. Okay, so it's been motioned by Arnett and seconded by Dan that we accept the regular meeting minutes of August 19th, 2025. This motion is amendable, debatable, and requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those all opposed, say no's, okay. Then that motion passes. We'll go ahead and accept those regular meeting minutes. Now, on to the next item, which is item number four, consideration and possible action on the approval of the Chapter 380 Economic Development Incentive Agreement. It was presented by BCS and authorized by myself, MEBC President, to sign the agreement. Okay, where would we like to begin on this? Several weeks ago?
Hello.
That's you. Yeah, okay.
So yeah, just to bring it up to speed on what this development is and where it's at, so back in May this year, we had a workshop with the City Council and MEBC kind of outlining MBCS, which is the developer board, outlining essentially the terms of their agreement. Will be reimbursed, and which parties, i.e. the city and MEBC, will be contributing towards their reimbursement of $4.8 million. So that reimbursement will cover the improvements required, I actually have, and I provided. These were also provided to City Council as a part of the development agreement. No.
No?
So the exhibits that I'm handing out are essentially all of the infrastructure improvements related to the project. They will be required to extend water lines from the dead end where the northern boundary of Home Depot's property is to Long Star Park, as well as along the front of their property from CD Stewart to Buffalo Springs Drive. There will also be required to extend San Jose Stewart in that same vicinity between CD Stewart and Buffalo Springs Drive. And then on the left, the U.S. Steel Roadways, which they would require some maintenance. As a part of their development agreement, we are requiring the CIA from Climate, Health, and Forecourt essentially outlining what would be actually required in terms of spoke of improvements and technical specifications. So if they're developing, which again, property acres of commercial and multifamily, if that requires improvements to be made for both CD Stewart and Buffalo Springs, we will require them to do so. And so that is essentially the terms of development agreement. 380 agreement that's here in front of y'all that y'all are taking action on today essentially outlines the funding mechanisms for that. So essentially, as further comments from MEBC and Council on that May 12 meeting, MEBC was comfortable providing a core of essential reimbursement back to BCS Capital of the city's two cents that they give back on all tax credits from the properties that are possible based on their numbers placed to an annual of $69 million plus to be given back over the course of 10 years or the sooner, the sooner of 10 years from the execution of this agreement or the payback of $4.8 million.
Has there been any, I guess, they were talking about bringing in certain retail entities. Has that changed at all, or?
So probably when y'all last saw the property, I believe they were still talking to Academy and Texas Roadhouse. Those, the conversation was still happening, is my understanding. But we will have to confirm that as far as it was being locked down with BCS Capital.
Nothing's been confirmed yet?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, okay.
Question on the utility here. I see there's a proposed 26-foot utility easement. Is that going to require the city purchasing property?
No, so that is required for all developments. Essentially, anything adjacent to Long Island would require to provide utility easements. Just so in the event that Texas out wide into the roadway, like they're doing on the west side of the city, we would have the ability to relocate and not be charged for that relocation of utilities.
Has the development changed at all in terms of the retention pond that they were originally? I know they were working to try to bring that.
Yeah, no, that has not changed. They haven't submitted something drawing to it. Just to be clear, but from our understanding, the requirement of the tenant has not changed.
It's not changed.
Their reserve, I believe, is still to be located along Buffalo Springs Drive.
Okay, okay. Council's already seen this, Ms. Carroll? Have you all already been apprised of ish?
So it asked for a three to two vote.
It was a three to two vote?
Yes.
Nay or nay?
Three to yes, two to no.
Okay. Two, no.
This was back on August 12th.
August 12th, okay. I'm guessing you were a no?
Uh-uh.
I was a yes.
You were a yes?
Yeah.
No, it's me and Tom that voted no.
Well.
Now, the only reason I voted no, just so everybody understands, is I think it's a terrible deal. We're wanting to build, yes, but we're reimbursing 100% of everything.
Yeah, it's a lot.
We're buying the whole thing for them, so I don't... The taxpayers are developing this piece of property for these guys.
See, you know, I don't disagree with you either, Casey. I think it's a good deal for the city in terms of having them here, but that's a lot of money to give up for a long period of time. Tax revenue, we basically won't see the...
Nothing.
What do they expect? Mary Ann? Mary Ann's here? Mary Ann's here, yeah. Do we expect, Mary, can I ask you, Mary Ann, is it okay? Do we expect, do we have any kind of a forecast of what the revenues may look like from that development? I guess it's hard to tell if you don't know who's going in.
They did provide some projections, some forecasts based on who they believe to be tenants. That's why we structured the agreement the way that we did at the 10 years, because they should be relatively close to their payback amount within those 10 years.
Gotcha.
The trigger for the agreement is the certificate of occupancy, and so that will be on the first property that opens. So whatever that may be, if that's the retail location, a retail location, that starts about today.
But we don't have any guarantees of retail commitment so far that we're aware of.
I understand, because we don't have any solvers.
So correct me, Casey, on this thing. What they're asking for, for us, is to provide city infrastructure. I don't understand the other part of the project that we're...
So we're paying them $4.8 million to... So we're reimbursing 100% of the roads that they're building. The pond, we're basically paying for the pond through, even though we can't legally pay for a pond, we're giving them a grant, basically, to pay for the pond, which is development cost. We're paying for retaining walls, which they have to have to develop the property through the same grant, right? So they bought a hill, and they want the city to make it flat for them, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, that, yeah, okay. So my understanding in the first original conversations that we had with the developer was the apartments had to go in because they were the bank.
That's right. So the apartments are on the backside. They're the ones that are coming up with the cash.
So without the apartments, the thing wouldn't happen, so...
Quick clarify, the apartments are working, strictly the commercial that's we are unaware of. So more neighbors will be involved in the apartment complex. They've already been signed on as a...
Yeah, and that's a different group within the group, a different agreement department. The other thing that upset me the night of the agreement was the fact that the whole thing, originally, they were supposed to do the north end of CD Stewart.
Yeah.
And they swapped it up and said, oh, well, we'll do the south end because, and we're going to go a little bit farther. So they go, oh, we're going to go a little bit farther and do the south end. Well, that's all fine and dandy if you just look at it right now, today, right? Like, right now, today, oh, that's a win. That's a, it's bad, because both sides, if CD Stewart on the no side, are now developed. And that's the piece that they're going to leave. So we have no opportunity to come back to another developer and say, split it with us.
Right.
We're hooked for a million dollars to fix that road. The city's just out, right? So on the south side of the road, that whole one side is undeveloped. And we had the opportunity at that point to say, you know what, let's, when they come in, let's see if we can't get them to help split this road with us, right? But the way it is, we're on hook for about $8 million. Above and beyond $4.8, we're paying for the rest of it.
Yeah. But Casey, does the project, its development or the project itself outweigh that from a future stamp? I know we don't know that, we don't have crystal ball, but...
So based on projections, are there 10 years before they get us paid back, right? So all the infrastructure, anything like that's going to be used for 10 years before we ever really recuperate.
We don't see a dime, we don't see a dime of revenue from this project.
Not really. I mean, we're going to get a half a percent back, and you're going to split that with the CPD, right? Yeah. MEBC will get a half a percent back. We're going to continue to get paid, but it won't go to the city, because we're giving up our full 1%. MEBC is going to give up 50%.
A quarter of a percent, yeah. And then, so the EDC will continue to receive some revenue for it?
Yes.
But not the city and...
Not the city.
Not a great rate of return.
Right. So on paper, if they develop it out 100% overnight, it pays back relatively quickly and it looks nice, right? I mean, yeah, okay, it's not a terrible deal, but that's on paper.
Yeah.
Saying that's going to develop overnight.
So it's, we're betting on the economy, basically.
Oh, absolutely, 100%.
Well, we're betting on the economy, too.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think we're definitely betting on the economy.
So is it a bad development? No, it's not a bad development. There's a lot of upside to it. I struggle with how much we have to pay for it as taxpayers.
Right. Well, um...
That's when they want to develop across the street, on the bigger side.
Well, how many of these 380 agreements can we afford, is the question.
Well, that's the other thing, right? You know, they're like, oh, well, we're not in debt, but technically it's debt, because we're not, it's not revenue.
Right.
And it's infrastructure that we have to upkeep, and it's in the ground, it's ours.
Ah, that's interesting.
And we're not going to get a dime to upkeep it until 10 years from now.
Assuming they don't build out sooner.
Yeah, yeah.
So if the whole development were to build out and sell out, I mean, was there any projections based on, you know, like a complete win-win situation?
I think, wasn't it like six?
600?
No.
Six years? So six years is if at all.
If it builds out fast and everything is like a perfect situation.
In our projections, we are anticipating essentially a three-year rent load period where they actually get tenants in and solidify their contracts. So again, that kind of rounds out to approximately 10 years of, again, actually of this agreement. So they are incentivized to hit the ground running and solidify their tenants as soon as possible. That way they can seize some of that refund back.
Okay. Brent, what's your take on all this?
Basically, same take he has. I mean, it's necessary evil in order to do these types of deals. It's really the only mechanism, you know, unless the city puts out the money upfront to build infrastructure or EDC, either one, you know, to build this infrastructure beforehand, which is not always easy money-wise. You know, you can't, it's hard to outguess what kind of development, how many stores, how many apartments, all these things, you know?
So the city's got to put the money out to build the infrastructure anyway.
That's the opposite way of doing these types of creative agreements. So I mean, you either develop yourself or you get into these type agreements that you're not out cash up front.
Okay, so they'll be out the cash upfront to get the, to get the infrastructure put in.
Right.
And they're also on the hook to try to drive as much revenue as they can, so...
Well, they want their money back.
They want their money back, okay. So it's an incentive for them to get the development, become a five-star development. I mean, to get some good tenants that can pay some big revenue, right? Okay? Yeah, I mean...
I mean, I have no problem with as far as the city doing what we call public infrastructure.
Right, yeah.
The roads that we all drive on, I think, when we start coming into retaining walls and...
We're not building.
We're getting off the side of the road, now we're in somebody's property.
Right.
And that's what I struggle with, and that's where, that's why that number $4.8 kept growing and growing and growing, is because of all of this other stuff they want us to pay.
Don't think about, yeah. Carol, any take on this? Arnett?
Well, I think that if it was a 10-year process, why couldn't we just add that caveat and ask them, three years after 10 years, you still pay us?
Well, so that's the thing, we're paying them for 10 years.
Yeah.
The minute that they get paid off, right?
For 10 years.
Or 10 years, then all that revenue comes to us, so there's nothing for them to pay us, right?
It just goes back to a regular...
It's just a regular, straight up.
They're taking their draws upfront.
So my question is, is it BCS that we're collecting from, or is it the retail?
We don't collect from anyone.
Well, I mean...
Oh, we would, we would, we would collect from the retailers.
From the actual sales tax.
Yeah.
We collect the sales tax from the retailers, right?
Ad Valorem is from BCS or whomever owns that development that laid it out the road.
Okay, and then we pay, we pay back based on the retail sales tax revenue, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, the agreement's in front of us, and...
It doesn't include ad valorem, though, right? Just sales tax?
No.
Yeah, we could be pulling our ad valorem.
Okay, all right.
There's some, there's some other deals coming in the near future that would look very similar, so...
So this isn't going to be the first time we see this?
Well, but are we getting tapped out right now?
Well, I mean, it's coming, you know what? You know, there's no real better mechanism right now, and with the state changing things that they're doing, you know, either a city is going to have to build in preparation for growth or do these types of, and they're really the cleanest way to do it. I mean, it saves you rapping money upfront.
Yeah, because we...
Everybody, both sides, and you're betting on future money, and generally it comes.
Well, we know it's coming, we know it's coming. We know, we know the growth's coming, we know the rooftops are coming, so that'll support the, I think that'll support, especially this development, it's in such a good spot.
Well, yeah, it's prime.
Well, I just think that, and I have to take my, my, my business heart out, I just think we know risk is never no reward, and I just think at some point...
Do you have that on your business card?
Yeah. I just think at some point in time, and we all have been in the corners about things from a business standpoint, but I think once you get through the thickets, once you get through the thickets, you'll see it's much easier, and it's, I would do it.
Well, scared money never made money, right? And so you got to throw a little out there if you're going to see some return. I just think the development, if they're, if they are correct in their assessment, they're going to get some good retailers in here, some top-quality retailers, I think that would be great for the city. I feel like the city would appreciate that. And EDC is, that's what we're here for, is to try to support economic development, so...
And me being here as long as I have, and Karen, though, I remember going with a corner about building John Butler's Pavilion.
Really?
You know, so many things that we look at now in Montgomery.
Right.
That's shriving and doing well, it was just a thought. I think it was the same thoughts about Home Depot and maybe HEB.
Yeah.
But you just got to jump off the cliff and see what's at the bottom.
But my issue with our latest two deals, one with HEB, which they, there is no deal, they come in and said, here, we're going to pay for everything, we're going to build our building, and well, you know, assigned the very waiver, right?
No harm, no foul, no, we're coming in.
Home Depot come in and paid us, basically, to come.
Were you part of that deal?
Yeah, so that's the deal I made with Home Depot, to get the $750,000 that they gave us.
Right.
Right? And then they, then we did a 380 agreement on the backside, where we pay them back for the chunk of road that we're going to fix.
But why did you talk to BCS?
Well, because every time I tried to strong-arm them, I had three people down on the other side, and they go, oh, no, we'll just give you everything we got. You can't, you can't negotiate with, when everybody's just dropping their drawers and saying, yeah, we'll do it.
So do we hold first lien?
Yeah. Well, do we want, do we want to bring this to a vote or discuss the...
I think we should vote on it.
I can vote on it.
Okay, all right. All right, well, we'll, let me get the motion real quick here. All right, so this is consideration, okay, so it's a resolution of the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation. What am I looking at? No, I jumped ahead, hang on a second.
They just need to approve you to sign the agreement.
Yeah. So, so we're just approving...
You just signed the agreement.
To sign the agreement. Okay, so we've got a motion. Approval of the Chapter 380 Economic Development Incentive Agreement as presented. Do I have a motion to accept it as is?
I'll make a motion to authorize the MEBC President to sign the 380 agreement between BCS Capital and MEBC.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded that we accept the Economic Development Incentive Agreement between BCS and MEBC for the Chapter 380, and it's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And all those in favor, not in favor? No, we're all good, okay. So we will push ahead, and let's hope that BCS can pull it off. All right, very good. Okay, we're going to jump ahead now to... This is, this is an interesting concept. Who thought this up, by the way? Was that you, Brent?
Yes.
Brent, you just, you just trying to get, you trying to go out on more dates? What's going on here?
I don't know. I was trying to make it nice and organized and, you know, to get WGA and to get everything. This is a meeting we can't have if we need to have things. I just thought it would make it easier, and sometimes it's hard for, we tried to do a special meeting and nobody showed up.
Oh, no.
I'm not going to plan on a little less. The council has to be here for all of those, and things that happen there, you come to the EDC, so... It's not you, of course.
I know, I know. Well, let me just read the, 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 the consideration is for a resolution to establish regular meeting schedule that is changed from monthly to quarterly. So any discussion on this as far as pros and cons?
Well, I guess, I mean, we've got obviously communication and everything like that, which is a whole lot better, obviously, now.
Right.
And we could come in for a special meeting if we had to. I don't have any issues coming every month, it's a few months, maybe, that we travel, but I don't want to dilute our position.
That's, that's... I'm just trying to keep an eye on it. It's trying to get all this together, like we're doing tonight, you know, we're going to go over these projects, and when you have a person that's working full-time for the EDC, they're going to be continually communicating with you the things that are going on.
Okay.
I mean, we're not doing the events like you were, which, what you really got the updates on, so, I mean, you know, these kind of things, like the downtown, you know, stuff.
Right.
Takes time to get it all together, and...
Right, yeah.
So...
It's, so...
Just being one of those important issues.
Yeah, what Dan said, do we have a full-time person on the EDC yet?
We're working.
Working on it? Any timeline for that transition?
October 1st.
Okay.
New budget.
New budget, good, okay. Is there a way that I could schedule maybe regular meetings with her to just keep up?
Yeah, you can do it as well.
Okay. Because I think if I'm kind of filling in the gaps, if we do require a special meeting for something that's maybe hot, you know, like a property agreement or a piece of property, you know, there's things that come up from that.
There are a couple, yeah.
And you probably, yeah, you probably already have a few, so let's, I mean, I don't have a problem setting it up as a regular schedule for quarterly, but I would like to be able to meet regularly with Stephanie and just, and keep the board apprised.
It's not hard now, you got them.
I got a nice...
There's nowhere to go.
All right, so any, anybody opposed to this? Are they okay?
I'm okay with it.
How about you, Arnett?
I'm good.
You're good, Casey? Okay, all right, well, let's bring it to a vote then. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that the EDC meet on a quarterly basis, and we're still kept informed on what's going on, and we can still have special meetings if needed.
Okay. Second? All right, it's been motioned and seconded that, that we establish a regular meeting schedule to change from monthly to quarterly based on the schedule of the third Tuesday in January, April, July, and October at 6:00 PM. It's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And all those opposed, no? That motion passes? All right, so we will, from now on, see less of each other.
But we're still having the meeting in October.
Yeah, October, yeah.
It's coming up, okay.
All right, now we get to my favorite subject, Ms. Tilly. Hey, by the way, oh, I need to read the motion. Sorry, I got, I got ahead of myself. I was so excited to see you. All right, so we are now going to get an update from Ms. Tilly. This is going to be regarding the wayfinding project, and Ms. Tilly got three bids, and we're very, I'm very excited. Thank you, Tilly. Okay? All right, well, I'll let you go ahead and take the floor then.
So we can start with the first one that you have there, Atlas Signs. Let's see what their quote was.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that as you look at all three of these quotes that you have from these contractors, each and every one of them are willing to, not negotiate, but they're willing to take a look at in detail each of the signs that we're proposing or that we'd like to have, and be able to adjust the materials, adjust colors, paint, but still keeping with the quality of the sign that you'd like to have.
Okay.
So the price is, can go down.
Okay.
I know that 1.2, let's see here, 1.2, almost 1.3 from Atlas Sign was a quote.
I was hoping that was the number.
Yeah, that was the first quote that we had. They were able to bring it down to 895,000?
Yeah.
I think it was, yeah. 900,000, almost 900,000. And then the third one, also, they quoted...
Well, they started at 1.1, but then they gave a discount, and it went to 940,000.
Yes, with the discount. And again, each one of them, we're able to say that they can come back to us, and we can look at each one of the signs. Different paint color, different reflection, reflecting material, different quote material, Different paint color, different reflection, reflecting material, uh, different cold material, but still coming in the same quality that we're looking for.
So, Ms. Tilly, I reviewed all these quotes and then went to the companies themselves and, um, did some digging a little bit. And I was able to, uh, discern that LED Partners is way buttoned up. I mean, their, their, their quote was buttoned up, they've got a hundred and fifty five star reviews, nope, not a single bad review, uh, on Google. They, um, and if you read, I read the reviews, they, they just, they, they care for the cities they work with, care for the customers they work. They just had a really, really good vibe to them, what is your thought? You don't?
I got all three quotes.
She sounds like when, when those commentators ask, but who you think's gonna win? I appreciate that, though, thank you.
So, you went to all three?
Hmm?
You went to all three?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, I don't know if it's necessary to put it on the record as far as what we thought or didn't think. I mean, I'm just telling you what I, what I did is the due diligence and whatnot. And I found, uh, uh, probably LED to be, uh, the best. Uh, the second one would be, uh, FSG and Atlas was just not even in the ballpark. They, they're, they're, I, I saw nothing on them that made me go, wow, I can't wait to use them, I'll work with them, but, uh, what are next steps, determining who we wanna go with and put it out for, how does it work?
I guess you could determine who you'd like to go with.
Okay.
Choose if the price is good enough or if you wanna negotiate the price and then select it, because this is our three bid through five words.
Okay, we're done then, yeah.
And what we need to do is to button up the proposal that we have received from Merch.
Right.
Uh, like I said, each one of the sign companies found discrepancies, uh, as they went through the details. Some signs that were listed, uh, actually didn't have a detail on that sign.
Okay, okay.
Uh, some of the locations, I might have to drive these locations again. Some of the photos don't match the location that.
So, we just need to, we just need to clean it up a little bit, okay. But as, aside from that, though, um, did you have any conversations with any of these folks for the most part, yet?
Yeah, there's, there's very many conversations with them.
And, and, and no indication, I know you're not gonna tell me, so, okay.
So, what, what kinda timeframe are the, on any of them, I mean, are they a year out?
Five to seven weeks. Five to seven weeks.
Manufacturing the signs, placement?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's what, that, I'm just talking about the company that I was looking strong at, LED Partners.
You know, they do the big, the big brick ones?
Yeah, yeah, they do the monument signs and everything.
What do they call them, those gates or gate one, gate two, is that what it's up with?
Yeah, they.
Do the entry?
The other thing I liked about, uh, LED was that they had, um, a five-year warranty on their signs where none of the other ones expressed a warranty at all. They also have breakaway on all the signs.
That's required.
Oh, it's required, okay, so I just, I, nobody else mentioned it on their other proposals, so. I mean, when you're, when you're bidding a million dollar proposal, you'd think a little detail would be included, but maybe they do it all the time, I don't know.
Well, what they look at is the package that I had sent to, to Trump merch.
Okay.
So.
It had a lot of detail in it, okay.
Yes, they had a lot of detail.
Well, um, I like LED Partners, but I, I'm open to what anybody else has, if they.
Does that need to be an official vote or we can just choose?
I think you can just choose, is it, is there, I mean, if you pick a vendor and, and give me a, a price to, from this dollar or less, we'll just get it done.
Casey?
No, I'm good with LED, I just, as long as, you know, we just tell Brent not to exceed the quote price, no, no coming back with, you know, add-ons or.
I, I think it's fine, we got the budget for it, we're ready to move forward, they've given us a discount, it seems commensurate with the other bidders and with the discount, it makes it much more attractive and the fact that they have great reviews and a lot of, uh, they, they take care of their clients, so. For me, it would be LED, anybody got a, okay?
I have a lead, you know, some of them. I've got your recommendations.
Okay, then, I, uh, Tilly, thank you, let's, let's, uh, let's see if we can engage LED Brent, let's.
Say it in.
Okay, so, say it in.
Say it in court.
Say it in, 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 in director speak?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, uh, MEDC is authorizing, uh, the city to push forward on engaging LED Partners for the wayfinding sign project.
Not to exceed, uh.
Bid price.
I'm sorry, the bid price, the bid quoted price of nine hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-five cents.
And if we can negotiate, you know.
A better deal.
If, if it doesn't take the quality completely.
Right.
You know, we'll look through that.
Okay.
Say where we can.
Okay.
Now, will it come back for a vote on it, or?
Again, no, once you wanted it, but you don't have the vote, it's, it's really a bidding item. Just approved, we can go ahead and get it done.
If, if there are any significant changes, I guess.
Okay.
We can show.
Yeah, on the one, she was able to say, I don't know, a hundred and some thousand with, they're suggesting.
Changes and stuff, okay. Yeah, I mean, if we can bring it down a little bit, that'd be fine, obviously.
And is, this is complete then, not phased?
No, this is.
You want.
Rock with it?
Home?
Yes, let's do it, congratulations.
Ain't you tired of standing before?
No, we finally hit the finish line on the project. Yeah, Tilly, I know it's been a project for you too and, and hopefully we can take this one off and let you focus on other things now. Thanks so much, okay, good. All right, any, uh, any other discussion on that, we're okay, we can move forward? All right, so we are going to now, this is another, uh, update that we, we've been waiting for, this is Downtown Streetscape. Uh, Brent, do you wanna take this one or do you wanna?
I will eventually, we'll start with these guys here.
Okay.
The experts.
The experts.
Good evening again, um, so this is providing, I think, to the Downtown Streetscape Project. Uh, so we met with, uh, the design team, Arger, Jimmy Mark, Jimmy Mark was here today, uh, to kinda talk about some of the project and updates. Um, bringing Brent, uh, up to speed as to the project. We've kinda revised the scope, I know last time we spoke, we talked about not moving forward with the additional stakehouse property, parking lot.
Right.
Uh, from Cowan to Prairie, yes, um, and just removing that from the scope of the project. During our call, we also discussed removing some of the improvements to the private properties. You remember on previous exhibits we looked at, uh, so, shared access decks on the west side of Cowan. We have removed those, are, are recommending to remove from the scope, just because it'd be a little bit complicated for a public improvement project to not be on public property.
Right.
So, making it a little bit more streamlined and less complicated, getting those easements, uh, for a shared access between those private property owners on the west side. So, removing all, or recommending to remove all the improvements and maintain all the improvements to the right.
Okay.
The deck.
What's that?
With that.
That means the deck or?
Yeah, so.
Coming out of the back?
Well, it looks like they've already built a deck behind it.
They already.
Already kinda jumping ahead a little bit.
Who was that?
Obviously, it's all the same level.
It's behind.
Jacobs.
What's that? Yeah. Ja, yeah, Jacobs built.
That deck was already there.
He just, he just re, he redid it, yeah.
He just redid it.
Right.
Because you couldn't walk on it.
It was, uh, it was crumbling.
So, it's gonna be on the, on the private sector that they take care of the sidewalk to get down to the street, I guess.
Correct.
Is this designed as a one-way then?
That has been a part of the discussion. That has been a part of the discussion, uh, as shown now, it is one-way, obviously, um, during street events, the entire street can be blocked off, so essentially from Carolina to College, College Street.
Right.
The entire section of property is blocked off, not incorporated and, uh, access on that, um, plaza area.
Which is done that way already, so.
Right.
Block it off.
So, that is generally the scope, if you have any specific design questions, uh, can we launch that to you specifically? Uh, with that, kind of this outline, uh, remaining timelines as far as when we're going to finalize the project, Argera and Kim and Mark are waiting, um, as well as WJ for the linear utility portion, finalize the package and get the project, uh, bid and constructed.
Okay, so how close is that package, do you know?
From the linear utility side, uh, it's simple to done, uh, if you remember, we don't have, the project wasn't done at all. But, uh, downtown water line replacements have already been designed, essentially just waiting for, um, the budget to construct, uh, the facilities. They have been revised a little to reduce the scope of what we previously had, you know, we were essentially replacing all the existing water lines downtown east of, uh, one forty-nine. We reduced it to match the scope of what's being proposed along, uh, Cowan, and so we'll go back for a base to, or future phase, rather, to complete the rest.
Okay.
For the Downtown Streetscape, the community lawn portion, approximately how long to complete design?
Um, well, we've been kinda waiting and, and working, uh, with these folks to, to, uh, understand the stakehouse decisions and.
Right.
So, uh, we'll start up again, I would say, kind of in the range of several months, um, to, to get it coordinated and documented.
And with that, uh, so they'll be handling the landscape architecture portion, correct?
That's right.
And then, Argera, we have to follow up with them as to their timeline for, um, the paving and drainage associated with the streets.
But that would all be one package?
Yeah, exactly, one package with them and then our separate utility project, again, coordinating construction, so we're not installing utilities after they're done the roadway.
So, are we thinking like we were before, like, January, February, or is that too soon?
I would hope that's reasonable.
Okay. So, then, we're close, finally.
And, I may be speaking out of turn, but, but it does, this modification reduces some work that is.
Yeah.
Not insignificant, and so, we've not updated the cost estimate yet, but.
Okay.
But apart from, uh, escalation that would happen with the inflation that we're seeing, which is pretty significant, uh, at least we are, this, this change reduces the cost of that work on private property, which was gonna be.
More favorable?
Yes.
Good, okay.
I have some stuff to add to that.
What you got?
I've got some advice for you, I was.
Okay.
You might, I'd like to hear.
Okay.
So, I, I'm the one that took that out on the private property. If we wanna go back at a later time and make grants with these people, we can, if they wanna improve their facade and stuff, we can still do that.
Okay.
If you get out there and you wanna talk to them, I, I hope you do and.
Yeah.
That's the kinda, you know, dollar that we can spend, the whole deal with the steakhouse, you know, anytime you wade into the private, public, I, I have a hard time with it because.
Gets messy, and we don't own it.
You don't own it.
Right.
And, and that's what I really wanna show here.
Can, can we move the picture up just a little bit, slatted up about two inches of this? Yeah, so we can see the Cowan, there we go.
So, I've looked at this and I, you know, started changing some of these things in here and I see the idea, if you look up here, we've already done that, you know, and you're kinda following what's happening here.
Right.
The suggestion I have is, is twofold, the sidewalks that you've started here, I think it's important to bring this all the way up, you know, so the sidewalks meet to this end, to this end, now, there's gonna be some breaks in there, but when you put the, when you put this plaza in the center, I understand what the, the idea is, the issue I have with it is the design is gonna take away his parking, and I don't think that's a very good idea, I think you should, you know, increase the parking all you can. Right now, we own this, the, the community center is ours, this is our property, we can improve this entire, oops, what's going on? This entire area up here and make this the focal point, you know, you could, you could improve this stuff, you could improve any of these things. We already have access to this, you know, if this is one way, they can exit this way, if we're having some event. If you look at the Antiques Festival, they were mostly here, but if we use this property and, you know, take care of the trees and everything, but there, there's plenty of space in here, if you improve this to, you know, have the event, have it more of the focus. I'm not saying you can't put something in the road here to tie this together.
Right.
You know, a star or whatever.
Yeah.
But it, it's the blocking of, you know, his property that I, I have concerns with, that I don't know if that was a good idea. So, that, that cleans us up, I think you should go ahead and pave and get all this done, if you really wanna have some design element in there, do that through stamped concrete, which is, is half the price of this.
Well, it should be a similar design of what we already have.
Yeah, I think it should match this, you've already, you've already got this design, you could, you could put concrete here in the center, which the center's probably more by, about the steakhouse here and, you know, put the star in it or put the lines in it like that you want, but it, it keeps from blocking out his parking that he has here.
Yeah, the parking was a major concern all the way through this.
Yeah, but you, you've gained parking, you've added a sidewalk, which is exactly what the twenty twenty thing said, you know, that's exactly what they wanted.
Right.
You can improve this, we could spend money in this parking lot, this could be expanded. You know, one of the ideas that we were looking at is, you know, this little band shield's not quite good enough.
Yeah.
We could put one right here in front of this building and have it facing this way.
Yeah.
With dances out here or.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's, there's options to do that and, and that's a perfect type of deal. And just a side note of what's happening here at the community building, we have, uh, a little bit of problems, mold. We've got mold remediation guys in there, so we're gonna be redoing this somehow, some way, no choice. Um, so this is really opportunity to make this a lot nicer than it is, which would tie together, you know, I feel like.
I like your, I love your idea, I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea.
And I, I would lose this argument with council, but I would love to move that building to the north.
I, it'd be great, just, just mow it down and get, and start from scratch, it's a, it's a piece of.
No, no, I'm, I'm fine with the building going because I know how bad it is.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
I mean, how old is that building, Carol, were you?
Oh, my God.
No, it, it's not that old, that's the problem.
I mean, it's not that old?
Yeah, it is.
It's old.
It's old, it is.
Sixties.
It's got the marker on the.
On the front.
On the front of it.
But it's a forty, but it's forty, it's not, it's historic, I told you, Cheryl.
It, it, we could do so much, we could do.
I mean, it's not historic, it's kinda cool, there's three other, just like it.
The first courthouse burned down, and then the county built that one.
Right.
The location is historic, but the building's not.
Uh-huh.
The location is historic, but the building is not.
Okay, so the location's historic, yeah, 'cause the building isn't even older than that.
No, it's, it was built in the fifties.
Okay. I mean, I, I think that if we can develop that piece of property, that is a beautiful place for, for all kinds of activities. I mean, you don't need, yeah.
Yeah, well, when I look at it, you know, and I'm, I'm an outsider coming in, but you already have this, you've already done this.
Right.
And they're doing it now, you know, they're doing a street dance here.
Right.
When you have the parade, they're announcing from here, you know, you could, you could switch that to be more over here.
Right.
The police are planning to do their, you know, back to blue stuff, they're gonna try to use this. We can't really use a community center for a lot of people because it smells like old building. I mean, the choice is either gut this thing and redo it completely or, you know.
Or clean it.
I mean, the thing about it is, it does kinda have a cool exterior look, and if you put outdoor, you know, deck or, or even a, some sort of a band area here where people could sit in this.
Well, we could also add some parking on the backside, too.
Well, yeah, and the thing is, we have parking and we have gyms, too.
And we got gyms now, yeah.
So, it makes a whole.
Ties in.
If we move the building to the north and you expand your parking lot, you can actually, you could actually have a concert.
I, I love, I love that, I didn't even know we had that property, so, that's, that's really, really, really good. So, what does it do for Argera, I mean, you guys have been working on this one thing forever, would it just change a little bit?
I'll follow a little, I've kinda already put them in a.
Oh, you phoned right, Brent?
I'm already reading their names.
No wonder they look so happy.
You know, Brent, you're right, you come in with stamped concrete, which is happy.
I mean, it does put us back a little bit, but, but gosh, it's a lot less.
So, you know, the reason why we, we used to have concerts downtown and we put panels around everything, right?
Right.
It's really a violation of those, those businesses, right?
Exactly.
But if we moved the building north, you can have your concert there, 'cause we can panel around that park.
Right.
And, and you can have your downtown events again.
I, I love, I love it, and I think the businesses are gonna really appreciate it, 'cause it brings people downtown without, without blocking anything in there, yeah.
Businesses, oh.
Oh, yeah, they'll, 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 they'll absolutely love that, you know, and that's a really good piece, a big piece of property to be able to do a lot of good things, booths, uh.
And I, I've looked at it and I'm, I'm gonna have to go through the process, but you know, where all the oak trees and stuff, then are, we can put some permeable, permeable barriers there so that the traffic or if they set up tins or.
Right.
You know, events in there, they don't hurt it, plus it doesn't get money.
Yeah.
So, it makes it a walkway.
Yeah.
That was the one thing that somebody, I think it was Mayor, told me, you know, that, that the yard gets really money, I said, well, I think we can address that, we can put a, you know, a walkway through there and have areas that are.
Right. So, would, would we need to do a redesign then? Right. So would, would we need to do a redesign then? Do you need tiny redesigns?
I think we go ahead, you tell me what you wanna do on McAllen Street itself. We'd make that a project in and of itself, get that done, because it's been four years of nothingness.
Right.
Let's just get McAllen done.
I already know, you're too old, Brent. Let's get it done.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, McAllen needs to be done, let's just get it done.
So the other thing to remember is that, between the signs and the, in the, in the current McAllen scope, we, we're out of money. So, the building and all that is, we, we gotta, we gotta, somebody's agreement's gotta go away, and we gotta start making some money.
I know, I know, I know, I agree, yeah. But I think, I think, uh, I think Brent's right, that makes a much, much better facility for anything we wanna do. Have you ever been to Capel, Texas? Capel, Capel?
I was thinking about what they did in Bryan, which is what I reminded you where they did
Same, same concept. They did a, they did a farmer's market down there on the weekend. It's a beautiful, and they put, you know, the homes all the way around, the businesses just do incredible, especially on the weekends, they just do unimaginable volume.
I like that.
I, I thought, yeah, Kai and Bryan, 'cause I wanted to know, how did you put concrete around that oak tree without killing it? And they, they used that permeable stuff, and it just looks like it's concrete.
Yeah, and, and my place, it's all permeable pavers there, too, so
It shifts, it shifts with the tree.
Yeah, and you avoid, uh, you, you can put, you can put any kind of aggregate down in there, and, uh, i- if you go to like a Texan game, their parking lots all done in permeable as well, but it, it allows for drainage, but it, at the same time, gives you stability, so. Anyway, well, my God, we see you all the time, and we, we just keep saying, well, we're gonna get to you eventually. Well, I don't know, I guess, so what are we, where are we at then? Now, that's kinda throw a wrench in things.
Not really.
I mean, a good one, and a good
I think we can tie up McAllen Street now. Um, you know, depending on what you tell me on the, you know, putting the star or kinda matching that brick, we can do that with, uh, you know, stamped concrete, in my opinion, is, is the easiest. Go ahead, get McAllen paved, and get it turned into a one-way like we planned.
Okay.
Stamp, stamp
Here you can get that out to bid, find out how much really gonna cost, you know, 'cause we've been looking, because if we do the mold and redo of the, the community center, I'm at about 150, $200,000. And EDC has nothing to budget currently, but some of this depends on all these other projects. I gotta get them out to bid, get them done, and see where we're at.
Okay.
But you could take exterior material off that thing, and make a great bandstand out of it.
I know, it's a rock.
Still using it, I mean, the
I mean, we have a, we have a community center right up the road that, that serves
No, we got a lawn start.
You, you wouldn't just be amazed at how many people like that little thing.
I know.
They like to have their little wedding dinners, and I mean, it's always revenue.
Well, you could create a skill, have a venue, have the same
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, does it drive, it does drive revenue, that, that does? I mean, not much? Nothing?
Not really, I don't think, but it
It covers its maintenance, basically.
Okay.
It's, it's really a community, you know
Yeah, kind of a gift.
Yeah, it's like a swimming pool, you know, it's a nice thing to have.
Okay, gotcha. Well, so then, we would wanna probably go ahead and push ahead on McAllen with some development in, like, just stamped concrete, do the, make it match the
I think we get the, the sidewalk done, the end and end, and then whatever we can do to, to match up with that.
What are you thinking?
Go ahead. Um, the development you have in Caroline is, is pavers. Um, we're very familiar with both. I would just encourage you to not lock into stamped concrete. You can never match it if you repair it.
Right.
We're doing pavers in major streets all over the place.
Yeah.
How would I like, what is unclear to, to me, and maybe we can, to me, more to, to understand your wishes, that, uh, you mentioned not blocking parking, and, and so, I would just kinda wanna know what your direction is, so we can, um, move forward in a way that you want. Um, I, just, this may just not be the best venue to understand the
No, I think what we need to do is set up a meeting between all of us.
I would think it's really that, that argument. I know I'm a good friend.
Do what the arrows go on.
But, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I think we, 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 we need to kinda, if we could all sit in the same room, and you know, you probably have pricing up in your head, I mean, as far as what it's gonna, estimates, you know, and I
So basically, and I think, what, what Brent's getting at is, if we take away this parking, right, all of this parking, at least here, but it's probably not a good idea, but if we just take this pattern, leave the parking, do the parking places, just like this, right? We have our sidewalk, so we're just gonna extend the design and redo the street.
Right.
We don't wanna like anything, do anything crazy or fancy. We're just gonna extend the design and redo the street, put your sidewalk, and we call it good.
Yeah, in, in their plan, you can see that they, they added vertical parking on this side, because you're a one-way now, so that adds parking. You have all of this parking, this cleans up this, you have this entry here, but on this side, you have sidewalk, you know, by the full distance, and where this parking is, you'll have a sidewalk that comes here, and then meets it back down here, and then meets it here, which meets up with these
And you don't need the, the bollards or whatever we talked about.
Oh.
Well, we can have those, we can have those designed in for when we wanna close the street. Hopefully, if we use this properly, this is where we're gonna close the street, right?
We need to, right.
They don't, they would love that.
I mean, if you get a program that, or an event that goes the whole way, I mean, you know, we can still do that.
Yeah. I, I, and I, and I still like the pavers, by the way. I just think that's a clean
We can do that, we can do that.
Yeah.
It's what you have already.
Yeah, it's what we have already, and it looks, you don't wanna be, you know, kinda mishmashing it up a little bit. It'll look a lot better if it's considered.
It would help me. I mean, I, I'm understanding you all more and more, but I, I think a, a meeting to understand and, and just make sure we're
Let's try to do that, Brent. Let's get on the same page here, if we're gonna move the needle quite a bit, actually. Uh, these guys have been patient with us, we've been going back and forth for god knows how long now, so it's probably time for us to spit it off the pot, as they say, you know, let's come up with a plan. I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad you had this vision, though, 'cause a lot, I think it's a lot more
Well, it's just a personal belief to
Lot cleaner.
Yeah, a lot cleaner.
We own that property up there.
Right.
We can do what we want, and I like to have things for a city that, that you can affect, and we can control college, 'cause there's no businesses on it.
Right.
So you can have all kinds of stuff there, you can have the street dance, all those things, and if we improve the, the property north, just imagine we have all that parking in gyms, you know. We're government workers, we're not there in the evenings, I can have all that.
Right, okay. Well, you are tonight, tonight's your night. What do you, so you, you wanna put together a, a time when we can all
I think we can, uh, work to coordinate a meeting. I'm happy to come up as soon as you all are
You just tell me when you want me to be there. I'm free, or relatively cheap. So, so, yeah, let's do that. Let's, let's get on the same page, and, but I think we're close as far as, we're not, we, I, my biggest concern about this whole account project with the disruption to the businesses that were there, and I know, you know, it's never a good thing when you start tearing up streets and trying to make, but this would go a lot faster, I would think, if we're not having to do all this extra infrastructure, right?
Well, you can always add, you can always just span off of
Say, wait, what'd you say? Say that again?
Construction is not significantly different. It's, it's, as I understand it, it's changing, it's taking out the, the gathering space that would, would span the street, but if you replace it in the street, you can place some sidewalks.
It's about the same.
It's about the same.
Okay, gotcha. All right, well
You're saving parking in, in front of them, which I, I understood as being a significant
Oh, we need the parking, and they need the parking, you know, so it's, you don't get much as it is down there, so
And I would hope we can still, uh, if it's gonna stay as one-way, that enables us to narrow the driving surface and still have parking on the west side of
Yeah, I think you can do it still, well, I'm with that.
So you, you know, if I were to go to the downtown businesses and say to them, hey, we're gonna repair it, we're gonna fix the street, it's gonna be absolutely beautiful, it's gonna match up top, but we're adding more parking spaces, so we're gonna make it a one-way street, so people, they're gonna be like, hallelujah.
Well, let us count the spaces before you go out and
Listen, right, you know, but if it's one, if it's one, I won't, but I mean, one, until we get a, a final, but I'm saying, if it's one more, it's better than
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's how, that's how hungry they are for parking, so, uh, yeah.
When you did this, uh, back when you did it, did you do any kind of traffic study and look at that, how that whole traffic did?
We did not.
What's that?
We always gotta get your counsel, and it's just gonna struggle.
Well, I'll, I'll go fight for it. I know two people already that are all in favor.
The mayor was briefed this morning, so
Okay. Well, I, look, for one thing, thank you so much for, I know y'all have been tirelessly coming back and forth, and we, we owe you an apology for
Well, that's not necessary. We wanna get it right, and sometimes it's better to, to let things take a while and evolve.
It, it's been, I think part of the problem that we've been, it's been a choking point for us, is because there's so many little, these businesses just, they, they barely survive as it is, you know, and so, to, to take, uh, we, we wanna improve their, their circumstances, not, not dilute them, and so, uh, but, but by adding that, like Brent says, up at the top of the north, that just, that, that really does open up a lot of possibilities that would bring clients to that area, but not necessarily disrupt their business, too.
The only thing that, that, I'm, I'm wondering in addition to what kind of the scope is now, is if we work with Brent and these folks to just think a little conceptually about how all this works together, if
I think that's a great idea. Could that, you guys do that, too, right? You design that kinda thing as well? Not just streets?
We're not building architects, but, but
But you're design architects, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, and you guys got great visions, so I think maybe if we, you could kinda capture that, we just move the project
I think having a meeting would enable us to understand what you all want.
Yeah, get Sarah in there and, and
We've already got a cost that the city, I'm assuming, is paying for the mold remediation or whatever, so just, it's not coming out of our budget.
No.
So that's, boom, this building's history.
Yeah. I think, I, 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 do you have to have the building?
No, make a bandstand out of all the limestone.
Yeah.
Well, you would need the building back, the council, that building was gonna have to go back.
We'll just move it north then, huh?
Yeah, we just wanna
Make it modern with real toilets.
'Cause it does
Yeah, the thing about the mold
Go ahead, Todd, John.
Like, the mold remediation is, it's in the ceiling tiles, it's in the walls, it's, you know, so it, it's pretty much, you're
It's gotta come out.
You're gonna hold the whole thing down.
Yeah, it's gotta come out.
So, so Brent, could we, would it be possible to, to, like, when you say move the building, we're talking about re, re, restructuring, redesign?
I don't know, I don't know if they, if, how that building is, if it's
It's not pure beam, is it?
I don't know.
It's on a slab. Slab, you'd have to basically
Build it
You could move it, but it's not worth moving.
Right.
To me, take it down, use, you know, make it look the same, make it bigger, whatever you gotta do.
Yeah, maybe extend the slab, extend the slab north a little bit, maybe, or
That's the thing about 25 feet to the north.
Yeah, absolutely, open that whole area.
25 to 30 feet to the I would just suggest that as you institute that, you look at various options, whether it's, uh, those that can start over, or is it in the slab? I mean, there are probably various ways of looking at it that probably are worth a little consideration.
You keep your saying slab, it's, it's in the slab.
Can, can, can council hold off on the mold remediation, I mean, spending 100, 200K?
It's gonna be tough.
I don't spend anything.
It's gonna be tough.
I, I agree, I agree with Casey. Take it down to the ground and start over.
I need it. It would be so much nicer if we did that, you know, and we could build it the way we want, get the design architects to make it look spectacular. These guys are really good, so I, I'm, I'm all in favor of that. Just tell me when you want me to be there. I, I'd love to sit there, see if we can come up with something spectacular. Thanks for your patience, though, man. We're
Grateful, you're right.
Totally grateful, my guy.
'Cause that's the thing, we don't charge much for it, 'cause that doesn't mean we can't up the charge for it, it's nice enough and big enough to put this in.
You bet. Well, i- i- if we do, it deserves to be a premium to, to be a part of that, yeah. Okay, well, um, good discussion, and, and you didn't make us mad, Brent, we love you still, see? All right. Um, I believe is probably a finance report up next. So this is, um, yes, Ms. Mary Ann, you're up.
Hello, again.
Hello again.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope. I don't, I reviewed it, but it looks good to me.
One of the things that I will point out is
Thank you, guys, thank you.
I provided you the year-end report after audit adjustments, and so you will notice a change if you were to look at this report and you were to go back to the last audit report
Ah.
In the area of sales tax, because there's an audit adjustment where sales tax goes, remember, the sales tax that you collect in October and November is actually for the previous fiscal year, so there's an audit adjustment that puts that back. And so, right now, it's showing that we still have $68,000 to collect. And you have to remember, even of August, September, October, November, to, for net, you're up.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't have anything.
Nothing, nothing major to report, okay, good. Um, how are we trending? Are we still trending based on what our expectations were? A little bit better than that, actually?
Yeah, it's gonna be a little over in the red.
Okay, good. All right, um, any questions on the finance report? No? Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann. Um, all right, well, uh, I don't think there's anything left on our agenda. No, that's it. Uh, anybody want to do board inquiry? Got anything you wanna add? Nothing? Zero? 704? Okay.
I do have one.
Yes.
Um, in case it got brought up in council, you know, we moved, we're, we're, we're gonna do our events the, the correct way, the proper way to do them. Um, as EDC, we need to decide how much we're gonna transfer over. Because right now, Mary Ann, what is the line item that we've kinda got budgeted for City, maybe get from the EDC? Was it 60?
Are you talking, what is
That's what it was for events, yeah.
You're going up for events?
Right.
So in the 26 budget, we budgeted $52,000 for events.
Okay.
So the city is taking
Events.
the event piece, and this will be a discussion that will be forthcoming, um, as far as the EDC's potential support for some of those at some level, not, not the way that you all have been doing events now, but there might be some components that would, um, be able to be supported from EDC for those events.
Okay.
So
So, so basically, though, I mean, the way that, that we were all explained to, and it was when the council moved the events over, we could do a line item and do a transfer of funds. They, we just wouldn't manage the projects, we could still fund the, 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 the events, but the city would then manage the events. So that is the amount of money that I would expect EDC, at least some, a good proportion of that to be coming from the EDC.
See, I think you can call, I don't think you have to, well, I'm, I'm gonna take it See, I think you can call it, I don't think you have to, well, I'm, I'm gonna take it slow. If, if there's a big event that happens, like you used to have one with crawfish or whatever it is or something, that you really want to get involved, EDC can, because that brings a lot-
We can, we would sponsor the event?
Yeah, we, we could do that, but the level at which you can participate is more administrative fee because you guys want to, you know, help pay for the person, the work they do. And it makes it cleaner, so it's just a, a straight across, sort of like you did the two hundred thousand for capital thing, right? Just a one-time.
Right.
But, but we have to have that on an agenda to move, to move it, right?
Yeah, well, it needs to be in the budget. I think we need to put it in the budget and then you can amend the budget to, to that line item, which we had, we can't, we didn't get to yet because we were-
Right, just kind of- All right, so we-
Although you still have that in your budget, yeah.
Yeah, it, the amount is there. It's just a matter of how, what that's gonna look like. Whether that's gonna be, you talked about being a transfer. Or if you have an event, I think the one he's referring to is the event that Charlie Diggs did. That Diggs event is that, that's, that's that true quality of life type event where you are looking at, um, doing a sponsorship or a support for those events that are clearly bringing people and revenue to the city. And now, those are the kind of events that we've talked about are the three-year deal, these little ongoing type things.
Right.
And those, that event, that Diggs event was not an event that you all put a lot of work into. It was, they came forward, they gave the presentation, you supported, there was a partnership, you gave money back. That's the kind of thing.
That we would do, yeah.
If there was something like that.
All right, so we don't, but right now, we don't, we're not under the gun to-
We can put it in the next deal on October, so it'll clean it up. I'll try to get the, the road, McAllen Street project just cleaned up so you can say, "Let's go out and bid." Because that's really where we need to go. We need to get out the bids. We know it's really gross.
Right.
We can always adjust some of this design stuff, whatever.
Yeah.
But if we get out the bid, then we know some real dollars in that.
It's, it's, the longer we wait, the more everything-
We still have to go through all the, the sixty, uh-
Right, and, and, and put the-
The real estate and everything.
Okay, well, in that case, then let's plan October to try to clean up everything. Clean up, you know, the, you know, our, our role is how we're going to direct Stephanie and our role as to how we're going to switch money over to the city or what, how much that's gonna look like. And, and let's get the, uh, poor Adura, uh, make sure they get him and he's gotta love you. You're the third guy to come along. It actually makes sense, though. Um, I'm glad to have you.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I'm, if I'm honest, I don't even know what we need them for. We've got these guys and we know the project. I don't know.
Right.
I mean, they did do the, did do the, you know, the comprehensive more wide, which is fine. We still have it. We can work on it. We can look at, you know, once we get from McAllen money, look at other things to do. With the Chetum project, if he goes through with that thing, it's gonna change the entire-
Yeah, well, he needs one big piece of property.
No, he does. As long as I'm not sharing your ear.
It's gonna take longer than the McAllen project. I'm probably sharing that. Anyway, well, I, I, I'm just grateful that you guys are, uh, thinking outside the box a little bit because it really makes a lot more sense, to be honest with you. I, I don't know why we didn't think about that sooner. I didn't even know we owned that.
What about the park? You didn't know we owned the park and the community center?
Not the community center. I know we own, you're talking about the park.
The, the park.
Oh, no, I didn't know we owned that. I, I didn't, I didn't know that. You'd think I would know that kind of stuff.
What, what park are you talking about?
Well, I call it the park, but it's just the, the bricked in area around the community building.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um-
The street.
The, the other thing I want to say is thank you, thank you, and thank Ruby for getting us, uh, some communication devices. This is, uh, this is long overdue and we're grateful for it, so.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, well, if that's, uh, all we have, then we can entertain, anything else? We entertain a motion to move on and, uh, close this meeting out. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.